Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Let's call the meeting to order, please. It's 5:32 and we have a forum since all board members are here. Let's take a pledge of allegiance. And go on.
Today is also June 6th, anniversary of our landing in Norman. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good law of which it stands, my nation, the river of individual, who has been lost.
We've got to do better about being unisonic. Where we are.
Oh, I was saying the old version. You know, the one that's still in print. And I think there was a new version that was.
Do we have adjustments to the agenda? Okay, I have, I would like to add this support letter for congressional requests as 8D unfinished business. And I would like to do new business 9C planting of trees at BFMS following communications and public comments, if that's okay with the board.
Where did you move?
I'm going to move the BFMS plant trees up to 4B. Communications is A and 4B. It's right before the review and approve the minutes. Any other adjustments? Okay. Communications and public comments.
I don't see any on the board.
I don't see any. Okay. You don't see any? Okay. Let's move to 4B then. Planting of trees at BFMS. And I think that was had to do with a grant. And Mary Lou is here to explain that to us.
Okay. So last February, you come up where the owl is. And kind of face you once.
Come over there.
Where you're near the owl as well.
It'll pick you up right there.
This has got to be easier than some of your classes. Come on.
I've mastered that. So February weekend, we are right the day before February vacation of a fruit and nut tree grant. So I talked to Sue briefly and I just said, you know, I'd like to write this grant. And Sue, you know, maybe we'll get it, maybe we won't. So I sent it in last day of February vacation. And a few weeks later, I was notified that we received the grant for fruit and nut trees. Forty-four groups applied for the grant. Twenty-one were granted. And only six went to schools. The statewide coordinator has worked with us before. So she was familiar with our garden at the middle school. So I spoke, talked to Rick, marked off some places. I have a student who wanted to do community work. He likes to dig. Like, perfect. So he came to dig and then we had, we had contacted Dig Vermont, Dig Safe to make sure there was nothing out there. He said, nope, nothing out there. Everything, all the wires, everything going into the school is in the back parking lot. Your teacher's parking lot. And I said, what? So he said, there's nothing, nothing out front in terms of running into anything digging. And then Andy said, stop digging. So.
Why didn't you say stop digging?
I get the message. Stop.
Well, we needed to, it was brought up, but we should bring it here.
Yeah, okay.
How many fruit trees do you have?
I have three. Two plum and one peach.
The, I probably, I called Priscilla and said, what's going on here? If those might remember, Bill, you're new. But back in, in 2010, when we started the quest to renovate the middle school, we had a situation where there were four large, ugly maple trees that had been planted somewhere along the line. I think in, probably in the seventies or maybe very early eighties. It had basically taken over the, the front of the property. You couldn't even see the school, basically. So our, the first job we did, in fact, we got some volunteers, was to get rid of those trees that they came down. Then when we renovated, we had the architect that come up with this plan that would have limited plantings and have the granite blocks there, which was to replicate a outdoor classroom. So that the, the teachers that wanted to bring their classes out for, for educational purposes, and of course, that's now a kind of a very popular thing now, more so than then, could have that situation there. So when I saw the trees up there, I didn't know what kind of trees. I didn't know how big they were. I didn't know what the scheme was. And I knew that the board hadn't been consulting. So I was very concerned about repeating the sins of the past, if you will. Now, a fruit tree can be very large or it can be quite small. I think if you're dwarf, that's one thing. But I think that the, to, to block the school building, which is a classic design and a wonderful structure to look at and take pride in, with trees and to basically undermine the, the outdoor education concept that the, that we endorsed at the time of the $12 billion renovation, I was very concerned. So I think that I have nothing against trees. I think it needs, they need to be, it needs to be discussed as to what they are, how big they are, and where they're going to be planted. I don't like the location where the first hole was started because it kind of interferes with that, the left side of the educational, outdoor educational plan. So anyway, I'd, I'd like to know what the plan is, what the specifics are on these trees. And then perhaps decide how best to plant them.
Thank you, Jigs. Mary Lou, you had maximum sizes, right? I think you.
I've got all the tags from the trees.
Plum was 20 feet?
The plum, they're two plum. Height and width 15 to 20 on both of them.
So maximum 20.
Yeah. And the peach is semi-dwarf, both ways.
Both ways.
And the peach is 10 to 15 is a semi-dwarf.
So 15 maximum.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's big. That's broad.
So wide as well as tall?
Fruit trees have to be regularly pruned as well. It's a, it's an upkeep, it's a maintenance item.
The other trees, the maple trees, actually were planted by the class of, the high school class of 1970 is the class that planted those.
And the people in the building, actually, I just want to say, love those trees because it gave so much shade to the classrooms.
And I have heard from a few people in that class that have commented that they were very upset when they were just cut down without any consultation with the class. And that has left the front of the building looking totally bare and without any other stuff. So we've got both sides of this year with people that may want it and people that don't. So I don't know. Yes, Andy?
Mary Lou, just because I'm not familiar with the grant. If, if we're unable to plant them, is there, I mean, what happens as far as, I mean, it's not like we can return trees. But I mean, are we going to have to reimburse the grant or?
They would probably use them somewhere at another location.
Okay, all right.
I would think.
Megan?
Somebody, just for my own education, answer me. Is landscaping question usually a board issue?
No, not usually. Usually it's a, a school issue.
It seems like it shouldn't be.
Also, in terms of using the front of the building, it is southern exposure. There is no class that can sit out there. This would give at least a small group shade. Because the way we thought of positioning was so that, you know, at one point in the day, there's only two benches that I know of out there. Not a classroom. And it's very, it's very steep. It's very steep too. So, you know, it would beautify the landscape. It would, I think it would add an awful lot to the front of the building. And the science classes giving them, today they went out, walked around because they had new microscopes they were using. They were looking for things to study. Just to me, you know, I never dreamt that it would be, they're not, you know, 80-foot maple trees. They're just small, smallish.
And it is not as normally a board issue. I would like, though, very much to see where the plan is to plant them. Can we walk out there quickly and just?
The markings are all gone because the lawn has been mowed.
But you could show us.
Sure.
Want to have a field trip?
Yes.
Let's hopefully do that. We will recess, though.
We're going to recess or you want me to try and bring?
Can we bring them with us?
Well, I can bring my computer and we can see if we get coverage.
Okay, let's do that.
That'll be the.
Let's do that.
I apologize to everyone at home.
Thank you. I'll step on a little bit.
The problem with that is it's not the message. The granite pieces are not straight. So we tried our best. It's odd of the building. I think that's about right. I noticed some, oh, yeah, I think that's.
I need the two plum.
Peach, plum, plum.
Peach.
And we get somebody else to buy one more peach. We need it.
And so the plum will, the plum will be the same distance from that block over there.
It's not exactly same because it's not in the same position. You know, see how, see how this has the.
The granite blocks don't fit exactly the same over there as they do.
So we tried to look at some buildings.
Same spacing?
Yes, yes. As much as we could, we had to compromise the buildings where the granite blocks are not missing. About 100. I spent $300.
Did you guys catch all that? Did it come through?
It did come through, kinda.
You guys needed rather than mention David. David was the C1.
Better with the key.
Maverick.
Mary Lou actually picked it up.
I do.
Yeah, Jim, you look like you've already hit the requirements that are with me. We'll just do the half marathon.
Thank you so much. That really made it clear what we're talking about. So I appreciate that. So it is the board's pleasure. Chris?
So I'd like to make a motion to support the fruit and nut tree grant.
Okay. Any discussion? Bill?
I have a question. For pruning these three trees, is it going to be necessary to employ a cherry picker? Or can this be done safely from a ladder? Even though this.
There's a lot of pruning expertise in this area.
Yes. Yeah.
We have a lot of resources for pruning.
Pruning poles.
Oh, all right. So it can be done from the ground just by using the right equipment? Pruning poles, et cetera?
These are not, wow.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
What, go ahead.
These are not trees that require a lot of pruning.
Right.
They don't grow as big as they is an apple.
Thank you. I need to know.
They're hardy to 20 below, all of them. Self-fertilizing. So you don't have to have.
Any other questions? Bill?
Because I'm on the fence, that's why I'm asking. They will not grow above 20 feet in height.
Top them off. You can prune them to, you know, severely, you can.
You could prune them to 15 feet, all three trees?
They have different growth habits.
Okay.
They're just going to spread out more and form less more.
Yeah. I would feel better if we had something in place for who's going to be responsible for maintaining the trees once they're, once they're planted. Did we discuss that?
Well, Sue, wouldn't your custodial staff be responsible for that kind of thing?
Yep, it falls under building custodial. That's who mows the lawn, does all of that. So the person that does your lawns and just does that would be, these are trees not, they're not, if they were tall maple trees, they wouldn't be getting up there and pruning and doing any of that. But these are fruit trees.
Okay, and has this been discussed with the custodial staff?
Yeah. Because they're the ones that Sue and the custodian were the ones that picked the places and along with.
Okay, all right. I wasn't.
Mary Lou came to both Rick and myself. I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I've done the school garden for 13, 14 years and involved with a summer program. So we have a group of kids that work in the garden. It's a spring, summer, fall. Thing with the kids, the kids available and.
Mary Lou consulted both Rick and I prior.
All right, very good.
Any other questions? All right, then let's call a vote. Chris? Megan?
Yes.
Jigs?
Hey.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay, and a little yes. So the motion's passed, so you may play. Enjoy them, all the.
My digger.
It was pointed out, it's not necessarily a totally board thing, but we certainly want to support what you're doing.
We're going to have a little celebration at some point, so I'll be sure to let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Lou.
Thank you.
I will say this, the.
Jigs, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're on review and approve the board minutes for a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't need a motion. You just need to know if there are any corrections.
I didn't, I don't think I even saw them.
They, they were sent to us late. So if, if we're not comfortable, we can wait until next time. It's, it's, that is up to the board.
Late this afternoon?
Late this afternoon, yes.
Yeah, I didn't see them.
I'd have to see a problem, but I can pass my computer around.
Do you want to look or do you want to?
No, thank you.
I went through them quickly. I didn't see anything that really needed changing. But it's up to you guys. Are you comfortable with, you know, with my approving them and?
I am comfortable.
Okay. Then in minutes will be approved, stated since there were no corrections.
Could we get them earlier, please?
She didn't mean to not send them, is what she, what she said in her, in her email to us. But yes, they should have come to us much sooner. Okay. Principals' report. Let's start with you, Susan, since you've been here in the room.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome back face to face here at the middle school. I sent my report to all of you. I don't know if you had the opportunity to see it in your email, but let me share it as well. Things are fast and furious at BFMS. Last week, our students took their very last MAPS benchmark assessment of the year. The data that's gathered from that assessment will help to inform our intervention groups when we return to school in the fall. Also, last week, BFMS held its first art show and concert in almost two years. It was nice to welcome families back into the school and it was wonderful to see the students' art showcased and listen to both the band and chorus. I'd like to recognize and congratulate the students who persevered all year given the confines of COVID mitigation and multiple illnesses. At the conclusion of the evening, the students recognized Ms. Masuko who is for many years dedicated to the students of Bellas Falls Middle School. I'd like to recognize Ms. Bowles, who is our chorus teacher, our music teacher. Ms. Masuko and Mr. Rumrel, our band teacher, for their long hours in preparation for this event and look forward to many more shows and concerts in the future. Our sixth grade is spending a lot of time outdoors doing their citizen scientist interdisciplinary unit. The students are collecting specimens that they're observing, measuring, drawing, and documenting. And all of the curriculum areas are involved in this unit. I'd like to add that Mr. Ferentz has a plethora of brand new microscopes that are being put to, put to use in the science room. And so they're collecting all kinds of bugs and bees and tweeds and looking at the microscopes. Our seventh grade students have been designing and building their solar cars and were invited to participate in a challenge that was held in Brattleboro. And let me give you, let me read to you what Meredith shared today. The Junior Solar Sprint 2022 Regional Race was held in Brattleboro this past Saturday. She also shared some photos. And she wrote, three of, three of our cars were in the top 10 finishers. One car, Big Bertha, made by Meg and Abby, made it to the semifinals. Sawyer and Brody's Nissan truck won the clever engineering award by the teacher judges. It wasn't the fastest car, but the judges were impressed with its construction detail. So that was this past weekend in Brattleboro. This week, they are working, they're working on their ichthyology unit and are headed down to the fish ladder. Our eighth grade students will be traveling to River Valley Tech Center on Thursday to tour the facility and to see the career and tech, tech courses that are offered there. This is a great opportunity for them to talk with students who are currently at RVTC. On Monday, June 13th, they will be going to Six Flags for their final Bellas Falls Middle School field trip. Their move up ceremony is scheduled for Tuesday, June 14th at 5:00 PM at the high school. At student request, it was, at student request, it will be held at the high school as an outdoor ceremony, not a drive-through. Should Mother Nature not cooperate, the ceremony will be held here in the auditorium. I'd like to extend invitation to all board members to attend. It's 5 o'clock and we certainly would like to have you be part of this. On June 17th, the entire school will be going to Pecole Lake as our year-end field trip. Students are excited to go swimming and fishing. Our current enrollment for grade five is 46. Grade six is 39. Grade seven is 67. Grade eight is 72. Our current enrollment is 224. Our projected enrollment for next year is, we have, we're going to have a very large sixth, fifth grade, fifth grade of 61 students. Grade six, 46. Grade seven, 71. And grade eight, 68. With a projected total of 246 students in the building. I also included some pictures in your board report from the art show. And I didn't include pictures of the chorus or the band because I didn't have time to check to make sure that I had total permission for the students and they didn't want that to be shared. So this concludes my report and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Anyone have questions for Susan?
So just a congratulations and it's, it's nice to see the school year come to a close on positive notes.
I wanted to say to Mary Lou that the art show was absolutely amazing. It was really, really something to see. The beginning band, the advanced band and the chorus did an awesome job. And it was just a delightful night. So nice to be able to use the auditorium here and to be able to go in a building and be able to share. So well done. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Let's see, Laura?
Lauren, Carrie.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Good to see you all. Let's see, our enrollment stands at 76. And while I usually report on classroom happenings, I thought that for this report, I'd like to report out on specials within our building because they play an integral part in what we do. So music with Mrs. Elisa Dano. Kindergarten, first and second grade students are finishing up the last unit in First Steps music curriculum and reflecting back on songs and movements they've learned throughout the year. Our third grade students continue to learn to play the ukulele and are working on 6/8 rhythm. And our fourth grade students recently enjoyed a visit from Bellas Falls Middle School teacher, Stan Rumrel. And many are excited to join the band and chorus next year. They are currently selecting and rehearsing songs for their moving up ceremony on June 13th. We have art with Mr. Jay Palmizano and students have worked hard on putting together their art portfolios. Most recently, fourth graders completed a fun camouflage project involving chameleons. Third graders completed one-point perspective roads. Second graders completed pop-inspired superheroes. And first and kindergarten students created their own scratchboards. PE is with Coach Ben Picard. They've been learning the rules and playing kickball, hula hoop tag, everyone is it tag and more. Students are learning new PE skills and also practicing the skills of cooperation, collaboration, and many more social emotional learning skills. We have library with Ms. Diane Clue. And books that she ordered months ago with the help of student suggestions finally made their way to SRES. And students have been. and students have been also excited to have time with Makerspace creations. It's been a while since we've met together, and just an update, I know we reported out that Lynn Lyons was in fact coming to our SU, but she did actually make it there, and her presentation was phenomenal. And although there were few in attendance in person, I do hope that many were able to attend virtually, thanks to Fact TV. She's shared some great, great information. One thing that I took away was, you know, that children and adults can learn how to manage anxiety-provoking situations by practicing new problem-solving and coping skills, by not letting worry boss you around, because worry is part of, is a normal part of life, and by facing the worry head-on with flexibility and creativity. She really was a dynamic speaker, and we were lucky to have her come to our SU. We held our incoming kindergarten family night. It was really well-attended. We collected registration paperwork. We had a circle. Students were able to explore the classroom with their families and participate in a few centers, and we even shared a meal together, so we're super excited to welcome our new families into our school. Ms. Clouet, our new library media specialist, she organized BOGO Scholastic Book Fair for students the week of May 23rd, which was a huge success, and every student, proud to say, went home with a new book or two to read. Vermont Academy teachers, some of whom are SRES parents, and VA students worked with our first and second grade students to plant our community garden, including lots of potatoes, which are super fun to dig up in the fall. Our return to in-person all-school meetings have been absolutely wonderful. We follow the responsive classroom format, including song and celebration, announcement and recognitions, and we always conclude with an activity and a message. Lots of fun and connection is had by all. As Sue mentioned, students completed the spring MAP benchmark assessments in ELA and math, and we have and continue to look at the data in relation to other assessments that we do during our weekly team meetings. As well, Sandy Sanhope from the All Learners Network, whom we've contracted with as an SU this past year, was here today to meet with each classroom teacher, along with Mrs. Bazin, our math interventionist, to dig a little deeper into the math data. Last Friday, we had a dance party with Lisa from the New Hampshire Dance Institute, and groups of students and staff learned new dance moves, and then at the end of the day, we all came together as a whole school and put the moves together with a dance party. Lisa will be back at SRES next year for a week-long residency, and we can't wait to have her back at SRES again. Over the weekend, and many of you may know this as well, but I was notified by a game warden that a rabid and aggressive fox was within the village and also sighted at SRES. To my knowledge, the fox continues to be sighted in Saxons River and recently, today, attacked another person. I've been in touch with the game warden, and he's asked that I contact the state police if we see it. And out of an abundance of precaution, and I've had several family members thank me for this as well, we did remain indoors today. I'm hoping to get an update over the evening that they have captured the fox and that we'll be able to safely enjoy our playground again. Tomorrow, we host the Vermont Natural History Museum as they share everything they know about owls, including bringing some live owls to our school to share with students and staff. It's a wonderful presentation. I've seen it before, and I'm really looking forward to that. Just looking ahead, June 10th, which is this Friday, is the last day of our after-school program. Huge thank you to Mrs. Tina White for stepping in and running that program. She's done a phenomenal job as we end the year. What else here? On Monday, we have our move-up ceremony at 5:30, which hopefully will be outdoors, weather cooperating. June 14th, coffee and conversation with me. And June 16th or 17th, depending on the weather, we're going to have a fantastic field day. Everyone loves field day. And our last day of school, June 20th, we'll have a family barbecue, and we'll have an 11:45 dismissal. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Anybody?
Is that it?
I tried to talk quickly.
Laura, so your move-up ceremony is the 13th. Outside if weather allows? Is it inside if not?
It is, yeah, and if we move inside the Google form and invite that I sent to families, we are asking that each student come with no more than four for outside due to increase in COVID numbers, and then if we have to move it inside, it'll be limited to two. Very typical of a lot of ceremonies that are held, not just here, but around the country where it's limited numbers.
Certainly hope for outside.
Definitely.
Beautiful, so definitely. Thank you for that. Anybody else have questions? Bill?
Yeah, thanks for the detailed report on the activities at the school. Very impressive. One question I had, though, Laura, what is a one-point perspective road?
I would love to be able to show a picture, if I could capture one, but essentially, if they, the picture that I have in mind, if they put a point on a paper and then they draw out from that, so maybe you're putting a point on a paper and then drawing a road that comes out from that, right? And the road widens, and then you might draw the trees on either side of the road, or perhaps it's a bridge that you see, but that one focal point starts the, starts the drawing. If you look in our newsletter, it was, hmm, not this last one, but I think the newsletter prior to Mr. Palmizzano included some student art, which was phenomenal.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I guess we're set. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Carrie, I guess you're up.
Okay, I have a long report too, so give up. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to give a student population update. So we are at 150 students. We actually had three students that recently moved out of state. So kindergarten has 29 students, first grade has 22, second grade has 32, third grade has 28, and fourth grade has 39. So we are into our last 10 days of school, and we have a lot of field trips coming up, and we appreciate all the support in getting our students out and seeing more of Vermont. We've had many presentations, and like Laura had said, our presentation with Lynn Lyons recently was wonderful. We do still have some copies available of the book, Anxious Kids, Anxious Parents, so if anybody was interested, please let me know, and I will send a copy home with you. A big shout-out to our kindergarten team for the recent pizza meet and greet. We had many, many students and families come to visit our school. They got a chance to meet the kindergarten team, eat lunch in our cafeteria, and as a big shout-out to Erica, Ms. Erica, Ms. Bethany for their yummy pizza dinner. Many people were surprised that it was actually school cafeteria food, so it was very nice to sell our farm-to-school cafe. Recent big shout-outs to Ms. Jody Hauser, Ms. Kelly Green, Ms. Cindy Rounds, Jen Heidbrink, and Carrie Pickering for their help in getting us to the Opera House. So we had a whole school movie. We did one school, one book of Charlotte's Web. We were able to go to the Opera House on May 27th, just prior to the Memorial Day weekend. We were able to also, prior to the movie, show a CES expectations video. So a big shout-out to Carrie Newton and Jody Hauser, who were able to help our staff and students come up with some ideas on how to show what it looks like to be a student at CES. So they, they recorded videos and created scripts for how to line up in class, how to go to the specials, how to compost our food, do a variety of things, so they're hoping that any incoming students will come in, will have a chance to look at this in the future, and so we can show what we do at Central, so we are Central. We also are appreciative. We've had a lot of support from our community partners, particularly the Rotary Club. Recently, we had our Free to Read event with our fourth graders, Ella Cattamatory, Kathleen Gavatsky of Halliday's, Bill Stevens of the Rotary, Margaret Gallagher, also the Rotary, and Kathleen was there from the Rotary, David Stern, Laura Rounds, and Jamie Camel were helping with this project. And so basically what happens is somebody actually from Vermont Academy, and I don't know the name, I apologize, was able to create and sew bags for the students, and with the donations from the Rotary, the students were able to receive seven books each, and they were taking home with a theory. It's one for each night of the week, and so that will get them through for summer, and so they were able to pick out their bag of seven books, and they were so excited. This was the second annual event, and it was wonderfully received. The students were looking through their books, very excited to get through. That was just before the movie, so it was really a neat day. We recently recognized our CES soon-to-be retirees, so unfortunately, we're admitting goodbye to Gail Moran, our special educator, Jane Stewie, one of our paraprofessionals, and Ginny Masuko, one of our Title I grant staff. We are going to miss all of them terribly, so we appreciate their dedication. They have been part of our school for many years, and some of you, we know, we might be able to entice to come back subbing, so we won't completely be saying goodbye. We are planning our room upgrades for technology, so it's beginning soon and into the summer. We thank the IT department for all their work and throughout this past year and for ongoing times. They are also completely instrumental in our assessment cycle for the SBAK and MAPS testing. Tina Smith and Andrew Petruski were helpful on the spot jobs for the actual days of the assessments. And then also Tina Smith will be also missed for her tech skills and her science collaboration time. She's retiring, and the second graders have truly loved this time with her, so we appreciate all that she's done for our school. And also, while not a full-time employee, we'll also be saying goodbye to Janie Davian, who is our CES literacy coach. She has come to the end of her time with us to support our grant work, and she has worked with staff and students for the past few years. We wish her well and thank her for all of our help implementing the Fountain of Pinellas classroom. Additionally, our second graders have been working on including their farm-to-school work for the end of the year, their project-based learning. Recently, Kate Kane, Jody Veresby, excuse me, Judy Veresby, Erica Frank, and Jody Hauser were able to attend their end-of-the-year celebration as part of our grant work with Shelburne Farms. So we appreciate their sponsorship for this grant and the collaboration with the Food Connects to help us make this project-based learning happen. We've sent out to many legislators as well that had visited support for that because it also works with our farm-to-school project and also our healthy eating too, so. We thank all of our families and students and staff for donating to our recent fundraiser for pennies for pets. We are still counting the coins. There were a lot donated, which was wonderful, and then we'll be sending out the tally as we donate to the local animal shelter. We also want to thank Lillian DeRozier and her team at HCRS for the support in getting the Girls in the Run going for us. They've been upcoming camp-going as well, so students in grades three to four who are interested, girls, are interested in going to the Girls in the Run camp. Details will be sent home soon. I will say sadly, we had to, in light of the Uvalde shut Texas shooting, we did have a review of our safety protocols and places, and we just want to make sure staff felt heard, and they were able to share their concerns, wonderings, and then our next-step plans, which are still in progress. We want to thank all of our staff and student ambassadors at the middle school for their support of our recent field trips. Sue Johnson actually came to our school too to meet with the students, but the ambassadors did a fantastic job of hosting us and answering questions. They all appreciated seeing the space. They asked great questions, and of course, they love the ice cream in the cafeteria. We thank Mr. Stan Rumrell for his recent visit. The students were eager to join chorus and band, so look out. Well, the students are a little nervous, but also very excited, so we will miss them terribly. Which concludes into the next part, is our fourth graders are gearing up for some end-of-the-year celebrations. Our fourth grade moving up ceremony is scheduled to be next Monday, the 13th of June at 5:30 PM. We do ask, I'm sorry, we do ask the students to bring their, be with their family in their cars at the high school parking lot for 5:00. And we do have to limit it to one car per family, one parked car, I should say, in the designated spots. A map was sent home with where exactly to park, so make sure you've checked your child's folder. They've given you that information on where to park, and be there for 5:00. And so we're hoping the weather holds out because we don't have a lot of other options right now for indoor at Central, so. We invite family, friends, and any community members to come by and wish all the students well. It is a sort of drive-by car parade, so come on by. They will have decorated cars, sort of like a trunk-or-treat, and they're all excited to show off all of their end-of-the-year projects for pictures and things like that in their posters. We also look forward to next week. We have the outgoing seniors coming to visit us. They'll be coming through the halls in caps and gowns. I am so sorry. He's quiet the whole meeting until now. The outgoing seniors will be coming and celebrating their final accomplishment. They'll be getting ready for their high school graduations. We wish all of those students well and look forward to having them come back to the halls of Central Elementary School as one last time as a student. A huge shout-out to all of our substitute teachers at Central and all of our regular staff. Last week on Friday, we had 12 people out. Many were sick, some had PD, some had personal days, but we did have 12 staff members out, and it was a big void. So we thank everybody for chipping in and keeping us open and keeping all the students learning and everybody teaching, so. Again, thank you, Central. This Thursday coming up on June 9th, we will host our Wild About Reading. It's a summer reading kickoff. We're partnering also with the library. We will have the Southern Vermont Natural History Museum come to our back courtyard. We are sold out of spaces for the event, even though it's a free event, but we do look forward to seeing everybody. We want to thank the library, especially Jen Heidbrink, the family liaison, and so many other community partners will be there, so. We are very excited. Our PTCEO will having a special sponsor as well, so. And finally, we do have an opening for an elementary teacher. So if anybody knows someone looking for a teaching position, we welcome them to apply to our posting on schoolspring.com at the Rockingham Central School. The good news is Kelly Green is shifting over to Title I math. The bad news is we also are meeting of a teacher, so please spread the word and let us know. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody? That was a lot of information, and we appreciate, appreciate that.
Sure.
I will say that I was a little disappointed that we ended up with the Central and Saxons River with the same time. I know it's tight this time of year, but it would have been nice to be able to have those different, so the board could have been able to see those. We'll hope that next year that won't happen, and maybe you guys could coordinate a little bit.
We appreciate it. We unfortunately had, all elementary schools are having it at the same time, at the same night, because we ran out of nights for all of the other events for the middle school and the high school. So we had to make sure we had families who, respect who are at the high school and middle school events too, so.
We understand, but anyway, it was disappointing, but I'm just sharing that with you. All right, anybody else? All set? Okay.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you very much. Supremedant update.
So just a few things. The, we've been gearing up our summer programming. Sarah Doran, who's our after-school director, has been really instrumental in bringing people together to do the programming. Here in Rockingham, we'll run two sites, so we'll run one at Central Elementary School. That's mostly because some staffing issues, but mainly because of the work that's going on in Saxons River this summer. We wanted to make sure we had unimpeded, you know, the construction guys had unimpeded access to the building, so. And then we'll have one here at the, at the middle school, so that'll run from July 5th to August 5th. Also, you know, Carrie kind of mentioned it, but I've asked, you know, all the principals to get with their staff and look at their safety plans, you know, go over them again. It's unfortunate that we, you know, the events that happened kind of, you know, forced us to go back and look at them again, but it's also good just as a reminder. I've reached out to the state and spoken with Rob Evans, who's going to be coming down here in July to walk the facilities with me to look at where our preparedness is, is facilities, but also look at our plans and then make some recommendations for, you know, for moving forward. Be it what it is, I mean, one of the things we were looking at using semester funds for with our art was looking at improving some doors and whatnot. I think it's proven that we hadn't raced into that because we might get some recommendations for addressing those differently, and so, you know, whether it's looking at the type of glass that we have on some of our front doors and whatnot, you know, so we can make those adjustments as we go along, so. Then, just a reminder to all of our community that tomorrow night, we're having a community night at the high school at 6:00 PM, and that is to review much of that our semester plan, but also to get feedback, and then. also to get feedback, and then just to share our strategic plan that we've been working on with focus schools for the, that's going to guide us in a lot of the decision-making we make in the next few years. So that'll be tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, and we hope folks can come and join us. And then just a couple other things. One, we put out the RFP for, excuse me, the kitchen upgrade at Central Elementary School. That got concept approval from the state, and so we're at the next point of getting, finding out what permits will cost and what the actual cost will be, and then once that, we get that back, then we'll look at going for project approval, and once we have project approval, then we can move ahead on actual work. So we're hoping we can do it this summer and be all done before school opens up, that would be an awesome thing. Some other work that we're doing, again, some of the principals mentioned it, but IT is working on installing interactive boards, much like this one here, and in the majority, it's not all of our classrooms as we move through, so there's different phases as they're going through, you know, so flipping those out and getting them in, it's a great way to, you know. It is just a monitor, if that's all you use it for, but it allows so much more for interactive, for students to be involved in their learning. And then the other piece that we really pushed forward, that really is like a kind of a big piece that has to happen first, is a network overhaul. So throughout the entire SU, we're, we just did an RFP on that and waiting for it to come back on overhauling our entire network infrastructure, and, you know, having that in place then leads us to, can we look at security systems for our front door, right, and making sure that those security systems, the ones that are here at the middle school, are the same ones that are at Central, that are the same ones that are at Saxon's River, so that we can support all of them, as opposed to individual, but then also looking at cameras. So it's a, got to have the infrastructure before you can start just building things out, so we're really trying to make sure we do it purposefully. So those are our big things. And then, you know, just so you guys are aware, some of the PD that we are looking at next year, Laura mentioned it, are continuing our work with Sandy Stanhope with All Learners Network around mathematics. We're going to be looking at, with our title folks, doing some work with the Stern Center around literacy and understanding, you know, the teaching of literacy, so that another, more tools in our title teachers' boxes for addressing literacy issues. We're going to continue with focus schools, but we're going to be pivoting more to the building level with instructional leadership teams and really building up the capacity of staff to support the principal and the work of the principal, and looking at that data, and how are we informing our instruction, what are we doing? And then also responsive classroom, is probably a real big lift. We're looking to do responsive classroom, the first level here at the middle school, because they missed out last year, and then looking at the second half, responsive classroom two at our elementary schools, which will continue that work that we started this year, so. You know, but it'll all sit under that umbrella of the interactive or the instructional leadership team will kind of help each building run that. So while there's individual initiatives that we're continuing to work on, they're not new initiatives, and we can kind of frame it all under. And that's all I got right now.
Okay, any questions for Jex?
The question I have is, you know, with, with the COVID outbreak and the two years that we've experienced that in schools, we know that we no longer have a policy where children are held back. They just keep moving along, I guess, I guess there's a, it's conceivable that a parent could ask that a child repeated.
I don't know if we have a policy around it. I know that I have conversations with principals, and they have conversations with parents using the data, and that conversation starts early with families. You don't want to show up now in June and say, "We're going to hold your child back," but it's usually a collaborative conversation, but as a, I guess as a philosophy, we don't hold kids back.
Right. Okay. The, I guess that would have been a better word. I think the, the issue of how much the learning has been disrupted by this period, and where the kids are now, and, you know, I know you've mentioned a lot of these supportive, there's all kinds of supportive things that are, whether it's a program that you mentioned, or whether it's the interventionalists, or title teachers, et cetera, but I think that, I think that we ought to hear, and maybe these assessment test results, which should be available immediately, or right as soon as they're done, you know, could, if we could have a presentation on an honest assessment of where we're at, and what, what we hope to accomplish this coming year, in terms of hopefully making up for some of the lost ground. But I think, I think it's important that the board hear that and understand what, what is being done.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that some of our schools are just finishing up their spring NWEA or the MAPS testing, which will give us, once we, once they've finished up, then we can look at, the way it does, it goes, you can look at fall to spring, so you can see the growth the child's made in a year, or you can look at spring to spring. So, you know, we, right now, I can pull you winter to winter, but if you want to see where you are at the end of the year, I mean, that was the conversation I just had with principals today. I mean, there's a couple buildings still finishing up, so, but we can do that, we can have that ready for you guys.
Thank you.
Can I possibly along with that, Sue, put you on the spot, and can you just, can you just say something about the recovery team this meeting this afternoon, and what we did at that meeting?
Absolutely. Glad it wasn't a hard question.
No, I didn't think it would be so.
So the recovery team met this afternoon, and we took a look at the new strategic plan cover sheet, the statement on there. We took a look at the new graphic design, and we had some really purposeful conversations around the context of the sheet that it's aimed, but purposely aimed and written so that not only parents can read it and understand it, but high school students and what the purpose of our district is, and what our hopes for our students are as they move through our system. We have a new graphic design for the district, colors are changing, it's an open book with a maple tree that comes out of it, and there are mountains in the background, and it's very, very pretty, and the colors are relaxing and eye-appealing. And so that's what the, what the committee took a look at today, we looked at, and we discussed some minor language tweaks, some wordsmithing, but overall, we came away from the meeting, everyone feeling that good work had been accomplished this year by the entire team, and we're ready for a rest over the summer, and we'll pick up again when school returns to session in the fall. So it was a, it was a nice way to wrap up.
The recovery, the recovery of what?
It was, it was started last summer when we were working for a recovery from COVID, and doing what we wanted to accomplish, and that last summer, we met almost every week. And then when, when school started, it was changed to every two, three months. We met in April, and we met again today. So it's, it's an ongoing team to look at this and some of the things that you're, some of the questions you were asking, Jex.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other, any questions for Andy? All right, thank you. Round of plans update, update on the capital, schools' capital improvement plans are on there under you as well, so.
Well.
Jim, if you can, or if we need to put that, if that's too broad a subject for tonight, let us know.
So I just wanted, I mean, this is a process that's, that is works, and will be developing, and it gives you some little, some little tidbit of information. Under C, under column C. Column C is what this year is, okay? And we still have three weeks left, and we have a number of intricacies with getting the expenses that are, that are reserved now in the SU budget back over to the schools. And so, you know, some of the sub-accounts will be moving back to the schools and trying to get end-of-the-year cleanup done. So, so this will change, and just keep in mind that under, under Saxon River, you'll see under that column C, we have $4,101,000, and the budget, the budget that was passed is $1,407,000, so we're pretty high on that. And under the Central Elementary School, you know, the budget was $2,982,000, and there's, you know, roughly $400,000 of unspent, at least, you know, right now, and again, we'll chew some of that up when we start to push some of the SU money back. Under the middle school, the past budget was $2,900,000, did I say that right? No, I guess I didn't, sorry. Under the central, you've got $200,000 to the good, because the budget is $2,141,000, and so there's 200 to the good. The middle school, which is the number I gave you, so, so the middle school, we've got a budget of $2,981,000, so you've got roughly 400 to the good right now. So, as I said, this is a work in progress. You know, the middle column, fiscal year '23, the adopted budget for next year, I mean, that just shows you kind of what we anticipate for categories, and again, it may change and be modified as we go forward. And this is where we stand right now. The, the column E, which says fiscal year '24, that's going to become the live data column, and that's, that's going to be all your databases of people and costs will be moving based on that database into these different buckets that will trap the money. So, so you will know where you're going to be always, going through that updating process. So if this is, this is not finished, I mean, this is a work as we move forward. Jex, I appreciate any comments, if you have any concerns that you have. You know, we try to, try to do the right stuff at the right time of year. This is the end of the fiscal year, June 30th is, that's, it's all over, and it's, it's a tough time, because, you know, when you've got 400,000, you say, "Boy, I held off all this time, and I want, I need this stuff, I want to get this done." And under normal circumstances, Andy would take that under consideration and say, "Hey, let's, let's see what we can do." But we're, we're really trying to dig out of the deep hole that we're in for the financial stuff that happens within the district. So it's very important for us to close down entirely, and, and I don't mean that to be disruptive in any way to the educational support that, that we certainly give, but this is special circumstances for sure.
I just wanted to say publicly to Jim, thank you for what he's put together and what he's undertaking. It's a real rat's nest. The pulling at each string and unraveling and finding out where it goes, it takes time, and it takes, you have to be methodical on it, you can't rush, and, and Jim has just done, you know, he's, he's really dove in, but he's, he's really taking that time to get through it, and, you know, we're making forward progress, you know, sure, we would love to move a lot faster, but I think we're, it's steady forward progress, and, and, so I just wanted to say thank you, because I know it's a daunting task.
So Jim, how are these figures, how do we compare these figures with what the taxpayers voted?
Well, I, I guess I would say to you, taxpayers should feel very, very comfortable. And by that, I mean, under, I just want to give you the right number here.
See, we don't have the budget number, we've got, this is a year-to-date action, so we don't have the budget number on this.
But, but you don't have all of the information either, because there's, in Rockingham, there's an assessment piece, okay? Now, that assessment piece is $4,195,000.
Thank you.
Now, of that, of that is a contingency of $420,000. So if everybody spent every dime they had, you're going to have 420 to the good, plus you're going to have tuition revenues, I just used a wrong number, 700,000, 800,000. So if I were a Rockingham taxpayer, I would feel pretty good.
Good at this point. That's what we like to hear, that's what the people out there like to hear too.
Not that we want to forget to budget the revenue kickbacks in the future, but the, I will say that I was, I've been complaining about the food service number in our budget, and miraculously, Jim has made an adjustment to that number, and we're back in the, in the range of the, of the budget for the food service. So I think the, getting, getting actual numbers for the, for the SU accounts, those for the assessment piece, will be good to see, but we do realize that there's an awful lot of stuff that has to be done to fix some of the, Jim has inherited.
Yes. It's been an ongoing thing for a while, so we do appreciate the information that you're giving us. Thank you. Anyone else? Mel, Seth?
Yeah. I was just curious about fuel oil, because I anticipated a jump from '22 to '23, and I'm looking at the different schools, from '22 to '23, there's 24,000, plus or minus for Saxon's River, that hasn't changed. For Central Elementary, it's gone up $10,000 from $14,000 to $25,000. And then the third school, the middle, middle school, heating oil is roughly the same, 27, 28,000.
We're going to have a negative, yeah.
So I'm just curious, why is it unchanged in two schools? So, I'm just curious, why is it unchanged in two schools, and then in Central, it's gone up 10,000? I would have thought that all of them would have gone up reflecting the increase in heating oil, or am I missing something?
Yeah, the, am I, am I wrong, too? Isn't column C year-to-date, that's not our budgeted number? That's not the adopted budget? That's what we spent so far?
Right, that's what you spent, yeah. And what, what has to be factored in that as well, is if you have an 8,000, 10,000-gallon tank, what's, where is it now? What's your balance? Because that can throw a lot, throw you off a lot when you're looking at that. The one thing that we know with fuel this next year, we're all praying it's going to be warm.
And it goes down.
Because it's, as I've tried to query some of the dealers, I've not been able to get a, a price.
They don't know.
And when I, when I was trying to sweeten the deal with some of the dealers to get them involved, I said, hey, Hartford, 115, Bellas Falls, 64, what can you do for me? And the answer, the answer's been, hold on. So, I, I think we're going to have to be very, very careful in, in the back, back of our minds and know that, that it's not going to be a pretty picture.
I think that is always a big challenge of doing your budget back in, you know, November, March, December, March, and not anticipating that.
We just didn't, we just did not anticipate.
I think we anticipated it was going to go out, you know, that they're.
Be about the same, yeah. Okay, so, Chris?
Yeah, and I'd also add that we now, looking at this there, we're not out of, out of the woods with the next year's adopted budget. There are some numbers in there that aren't right, or are missing altogether. So, I think being careful at this point is wise. We know that there are a couple of SU assessments that are going to go over, and SU transportation is high. So, being very cautious is a good thing to do. And we would normally have shut down spending by now. I mean, goodness, next year's going to.
Yeah, you're showing, stop, stop spending. Cut it off.
I think we actually went later to this year than in previous years, but, you know, some of that was just transitioning.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. There were some questions on capital improvement plans. That really was on our capital improvement plans. I know we reviewed those a couple of meetings ago with a, with a list that we had at that time. And we've already been in, you know, an hour and a quarter. I'd like to put the capital improvement plans off until next time.
The two, the two biggies were the roof, the, the middle school and central roofs. And hopefully, that's going through this glorious ESER process here, but the, those, I think, are the ones that concern, concern me the most.
Okay. So, maybe a thorough review for, at the next.
Well, that's one of the RFPs also that we, we got out, was for the facilities audit. So, we're hoping to get that back pretty soon.
Oh, that's right.
And that, that'll give us, you know, I think, some clarity on a lot of this, so.
So that'll be, obviously, that'll encompass more than just roofs.
Right, and that won't be tied up, real quick, it won't be tied up the same way the ARP money is tied up, where you get cons, because it came out of ESER, too. So, we're, we can get a, we can get the RFP, once we get the RFP, we can get a company in here and, and do the work, to get, that, that will inform us where to do the ARP stuff, so.
Okay. So that was kind of the update on the ESER as well, under, under your report, Andy, and what you just commented. So, is there anything else that we need to add as far as ESER, are we all set?
I think we're pretty good.
Okay. So, policy. Policy committee will need to meet again towards the end of June, either last week in June or first week in July. We still have several required policies to review and make sure that we've gotten in there, mandatory ones. There's C9, nutrition and wellness, D1, D3, D4, 5, E1, C2 and C13, which they're reviewing. So there's, there's several that we need to do. And we'll put like a four or five of those on our agenda for those times, and then bring them to the board after that for approval. But I just wanted you aware of where we were at and what we're doing. Chris?
And, I think that wellness one, you need to run by school staff and nurses and the whole nine yards, because that's really a big comprehensive.
One reason we haven't done it at this point, is why it's, it's not been on.
You may not get to it till next fall.
We had it listed to start reviewing two or three meetings ago, and we've kind of pushed it each time to the back burner, and trying to do ones that we could do a little more quickly and get our manuals, you know, basically in order.
Yeah, I feel your pain, don't hurt.
Yeah, so that's a, a good comment. Thank you so much for that. Appreciate that. Okay. We do have approvals later on, we should have approvals later on, yes, we do. So let's go on. We've got, do we need to do the resignation and appointments? Those resignations and appointments are just two appointments?
Just two appointments.
Do we need to discuss those in a second session before voting, or are we? Is that, or is everything that can be said, okay to be said in general?
I believe so, I don't, I mean.
All right, so if you want to update us on the assistant principal?
If you want to.
Absolutely, you're on, so, thank you. So we, sadly, Mr. Quadro is, after a few decades, leaving the middle school, will be greatly missed. And so, that has opened up that position, which we posted on School Spring. We had either 10 or 12 applicants. I formed a committee, and the committee went through all of the resumes and applications to review them, to see who they felt, based on paperwork, they would like to bring in for interviews. We narrowed it down, we narrowed it down to five. I reached out to all five to schedule the interviews. Three of them had already taken positions elsewhere. So, that left us with two, and which, we were very fortunate, both candidates were highly qualified and really came with good references, experience in classrooms. They did not, neither of them had previous administration experience. We brought both of them in, we interviewed both of them, and then the committee and I met following that and had a lively discussion about both of the candidates. And because it was really a very kind of, you know, it was, what's that phrase, six of one, half dozen of the other, we, we decided to bring Andy into the mix. And I had both candidates meet, meet with Andy. And Andy gave us his feedback, and the committee took all, everybody's feedback again, and we selected Mr. Henry Bailey.
What is his name?
Henry Bailey, to be our next assistant principal. Mr. Bailey lives right here in Bellas Falls. He's currently teaching fourth grade in Westmoreland. He's been a teacher at that school for either 15 or 17 years. He has a great personality, his personality will, will be perfect for middle school students. He has a strong athletic background, he's been a coach. Coaches make great assistant principals, because they know how to pull the best out of, out of students. And so, we're very excited to have Mr. Bailey join our staff as our new assistant principal.
So, can we have a motion? Since you said.
I'm going to appoint Henry Bailey as assistant principal at the middle school.
Any further discussion, any questions for, so? Okay, let's vote. Bill?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Chris? Megan? Yes. Okay, so, welcome, and, and that's, the motion probably should be to include negotiating a contract. Number two. One, the, his first year contract, his first contract will be for one year, for one year. And then after that, there's a potential for a two-year contract. Okay.
So, do we have the contract brought back for approval, or so?
Yeah, it should be brought back to us for approval.
Yeah. Right, well, it's, it's a motion.
Is that okay? Let me just quickly, because we changed the motion a little bit, let's, with those, those amendments?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Chris. Okay. All right. Science teacher?
We, as you know, we went a whole year without, with an, technically, an open position. Bill McHugh filled that position, did a great job for us this year. And it was, the planets aligned, and we had an applicant for eighth grade science. And again, I convened a committee, we reviewed paperwork, and we had an interview. She currently is working at the community college, teaching courses at the community college. She has a degree in chemistry, physics, a very strong science background. Previous to the community college, she had been a middle school and high school science teacher. And so she comes with experience with this age group, and she wants to leave the community college to get back in the classroom with students of this age. So we're very excited to bring her on board. And the plus is, she's an arborist and owns her own landscaping business in the summer. So, you know, sadly, we're losing our, our resident gardener, but we're excited to have our new science teacher come on and take that position. So we're very excited about that.
Remain.
Remain. I was hoping you wouldn't ask.
We're trying to need it for the motion.
Yeah, well. Well, and part of the problem is, my school laptop kind of died, and everything died with it, so I'm searching here to find it on my personal laptop. Oh, and Andy's going to be, that's a good one.
Oh, that's me.
Oh, wait a minute, I think I got it, I think I got it. Diane Nuzzo. N-U-Z-Z-O.
And what is the title?
Or what was it? You mean, per step?
Yes.
I think it was, what is it, Andy 11, I believe?
Yes.
Yes. And where they, masters or mastersure?
I just want you to keep asking hard questions.
No, hard questions tonight. Let me look here. She has.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
She has a bachelor of arts from King State and a bachelor of science from King State. So she has two bachelors.
Okay, so she would be a bachelor.
Plus thirty.
Okay, I'll move to.
A point.
A point, yes. That's spreading, yes. A point. Diane Nuzzo as Bellas Falls middle school science teacher, step 14.
Step 11.
11.
I'm sure she'd appreciate that.
Sorry. Got it?
I don't have that money left, but you go for it.
11, that's just plus, plus thirty.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Chris?
Yes.
Megan?
Yeah.
James?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. That's good, that's good. Thank you. Okay, so we're on unfinished business for discussion, in fact, and hence, and we've got approval of the policies. Those are, C10 is the prevention of harassment, facing bullying, and C10P is the procedures that go with that. C11 is student freedom of expression in schools. C12 is prevention of sexual harassment. C14 is the policy on prevention, 504 ADA grievance protocol for students and staff. And F34 is the flag policy. They were all posted May 18th, and all of you are sent those in your packet. Is there any discussion, any, well, we need a motion?
I'll move to approve those policies.
Okay. Is there any discussion on any, any of those, or, go ahead?
So, I understand the flag policy, I understand why the lawyer suggests that, I'm probably okay with it, but I have to say, I'm a little disappointed. And I'm proud of our students for having a sense of justice and the importance of equity and social justice. And I want them to be able to express themselves. I think more work could have been put into this to still have a Black Lives Matter flag if that was what students wanted to do. It's not really relevant here right now, I know it's a high school. But with some more nuances in a policy about things not going up that are going to disrupt student activities, we have a very clear ability to eliminate things that are going to disrupt the school. So any white nationalist symbols and all that crazy stuff that people fly, the, it's illegal to discriminate against people, it's illegal to, for people with disabilities or, or other than heterosexual sexuality, to discriminate against them. So you can exclude symbols that support that. So I'm a little disappointed, I get why we're doing this, but I, I think you could have done more, I, I think. But I hope our students will continue to debate the issues of the day and express themselves appropriately, you know? That's all I.
Thank you, Chris. And, and we are certainly encouraging that within the school. And there are definitely venues where those things can be expressed into the other. It was recommended through by Supreme Court rulings that have come out in the last little bit of year, as far as what they are, what they are looking at. It's also, you know, in our, in our state, what they're looking at and what others have been looking at. And we did not, I know as the policy committee, we did not want to have to worry about the other kinds of flags that we're told we might have to fly if we allow some variances here. So, some of that is going on. Let me get to others first, and I'll come back to you. Bill, did you have anything?
No comment.
I think, I, I think the policy recommendations are good.
Did you have another comment?
Well, it just.
You didn't look like you wanted to, like, do this.
The, it's been a bit of an overreaction to a kind of a minor court decision that was made that involved the municipality, didn't involve a school. So, you know, once again, school people hear the word court and the lawyers. So, you know, once again, the school people hear the word court and the lawyers, lawyer often, you know? I, I just think it wasn't necessary, but I'm fine with this, you know? I, I just think it could have been a little more bold.
Any of the others, any more comments on that or any of the other policies or any discussion on? If not, I'm gonna pull the board, Bill?
Yes.
Jigs?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And Chris? Okay, so those are the man unless they passed, thank you. All right. We cover safety plans. I don't know if there's any questions about safety plans that, that we want to cover at this point. And we just want to make sure that the schools are working on safety plans and that our students are going to be safe. Megan, did you have a question on that?
No, you know, Andy's report really made me feel, I, I want to make sure Andy feels empowered to make changes to the one he inherited as he encountered it. So as, as a board, I hope we support him with suggestions he comes up with, consulting with his principals and everybody involved. That's, if nothing else, for the next nine months I'm on this board, that's gonna be my, my project is making sure when he has issues, any kind of changes he wants to make to make our, our staff and our students safer, that we're there for him, but we're not an impediment to it.
Yeah, and safety plans are, under your care and your perusal. We're just here to kind of be informed on them and know that you've got them in place and so that we can feel our, all the students in our districts are, are safe. So.
And I would add, gentlemen, you have come and rob.
Adams.
Yeah. Losing names.
I won't tell you what my wife says.
I won't tell you what my wife says when that happens. We worked with him and he's just outstanding and has a lot of experience and sort of known nonsense, but, but realistic. And so I think people can feel confident that, you know, you're working with the best people to do that.
Okay. So we're set with that. Lease of sixty-six Atkins and Streets just on here as far as information because we border on that Central School does. And so Andy, do you, do you want to report on that or do you want just to?
The last I had of information was that the town voted to move forward with the lease with Bellas Falls Trade for ten years. I couldn't make the meeting, so I'm, to lease the land for Community Garden. But the last I'd heard was there was still about the village with water and electricity. So I don't know.
So they're still negotiating?
I, I believe so. I don't know if anything's been finalized, but, you know, it's promising news that, you know, Community Garden would go in there. I believe that Mike Stack and Bellas Falls Trades are moving forward with plans and developing plans and whatnot. So I just have not heard if that's been finalized, so I don't know if anyone.
Well, I don't think, you know, speaking for the trustees, which, which is responsibility for water and sewer. You know, clearly, the, the previous owner had defaulted on everything. And I believe the utilities, water sewer utilities were disconnected at the street. But I don't see any, any problem other than, you know, obviously would have metered and there'd be a cost to, to the, to the group that's leasing the property. Or depending on how the lease is written, you know, whether it's a net lease or net lease or whatever. But I don't see that there would be any problem with supplying water and sewer to the, to the site.
I know when I go by, it looks much nicer now than I did a few weeks ago. Okay. Are there any other further questions on that? Okay. Do you saw there, because we have a request that we do a support letter, that the chair write a support letter for the congressional request. When I attended a volunteer recognition thing for Senior Solutions last week, one of the representatives from Senator's office spoke to the group about the fact that there was still chance, and that was before the under May, which were passed now, but there was still the chance of submitting more proposals because there's money out there for Colonel Sanders, I got Colonel Sanders, I'm really good. Bernie Sanders to give out to, to the people in Vermont. So Cheryl Charles had done a, several grants. There were two that I think that where she's requesting money for nature-based learning. Some of that could go with supports for things for the community garden type projects. Professional development for teachers and staff and errors and those on some of the issues that we want. And there's a slight possibility that we could also get some additional funds towards the early learning center or some kind of funds that would support our preschool programs. So what we are still asking is that the board give permission for us to do that letter and get that out in support of saying, hey, yes, our district does want money, you know, that's out there for our grants, for these grants.
Well, I think the, I have a real issue with the, with the grant proposal for the early learning center because it went way beyond educating our preschool students. And so I, I would have a problem with that because I, it has not been vetted. It hasn't been vetted by the, by the supervisory unit. The finance committee finally met our first meeting last week and we, we haven't even got that one on our agenda yet. So I think to, to endorse something that's not well-defined or priced or anything else would be immature.
But Jigs, that's, that could be totally separate from, from the money though that we're getting from, we could possibly get. And it's a, it's a long shot that we could possibly get from Bernie Sanders' office because we do have preschool programs and we do have stuff that do need funds and supports and that kind of stuff. So if we didn't put it into the early learning center as a new building, we still have the possibility of putting funds into programs and supporting programs.
Do you have anything to, you have anything to show us?
No, I need to, I need to write a letter just in support of getting funds from his office for nature-based learning and the other, and professional development for our teachers and for those types of programs that, that we want in, in our district and supporting it is what, what I'm asking to do. Andy, do you want to?
One of the other parts of, of that request with Senator Sanders' office was for the work-based learning project that we're doing. So again, some of the work with Mike Stack, but continuing that in more in depth and providing funding for coordinator for, we're funding some of it through ESSR right now, so core, you know, years to, in the future to continue to keep funding it. So we're not impacting the taxpayers to continue that project for the next, you know, foreseeable. We were pushing it out almost a total of five years with the original proposal. So ESSR would cover a couple of years and then Senator Sanders, if that were to go through, would cover a few more years after that. So, so there's the nature-based curriculum and professional development. There's the work-based curriculum and professional development. And then there is some request for funding of staffing for an early learning center. So ultimately, as, as we're going through and looking at numbers so that we can bring them to the finance committee, we're actually, because the early learning center would not even be a, it would be a pay to attend. It would not be free like public education. So we're actually looking at the possibility of a, of an actual revenue source as opposed to a loss of funding for the district. So it, it was never proposed to be a public facility, like public school, like with faith. It was always designed to be a, you know, a tuition-based where, where people would pay to send their children. And the whole idea was to find it so that it would not be asking taxpayers to pony up and to cover that expense, so.
So you're saying that these, oh, I'm sorry.
Chris?
So I, I think, I feel a little bad, Jim, because I think you've run down the road a ways with this and could have used more information, but.
I could, I, I love more information.
I know. Well, and I'm just getting it myself. But what I do know, the only thing that would be free in the center is the ten hours of early ed preschool that we give now. Parents would pay for other services that they would get. And also the, the state has subsidy, which I don't think you're familiar with, but I am because that's how we ran the Westminster After School Program with young children, their parents qualify for the childcare subsidy from the state. And it's quite substantial. So there's a number of revenue sources and I think you guys are gonna start like having a picture of how that works.
Yes.
Yes.
But I want to say this, as chair of the finance committee for the SU, I don't see that committee having some sort of veto power over this.
Oh, no, absolutely no veto, but analysis.
So.
Analysis.
Yeah, but I, I think you're gonna have some of that tomorrow night, right?
Correct, yeah.
Where is the analysis coming from? It isn't from the, it hasn't been vetted by the finance committee. Where, where could the analysis come from?
Well, administration is capable of putting together an analysis, just the way we did with the food service before.
Like our financials that we just heard, the report on the financials, how, how in great shape we're in? Now, come on, Chris.
Well, with all due, with all due respect, the, the financial situation is not my doing.
I'm not, I'm not. I'm just saying.
Guys, let's come back to.
You are saying that I don't have the ability to, to come up with a budget and a proposal for a, a new learning center.
I haven't seen anything.
I understand that.
Guys, let's shut this down, please. Thank you. All right. Appreciate it, the floor.
So I don't see the problem of you writing a letter in congressional support. And I, I think I would like to move that the, the board authorized the chair to write this letter for Bernie Sanders.
Thank you. We've kind of had our discussion beforehand, so are we okay with just moving on with a?
No, I'm not. I think to bring this.
I didn't call on you. If you want to be recognized, please ask to be recognized, okay? All right, Jigs, go ahead.
I think that this is a, a proposal, a proposed vote without any documentation. And if you're, if, if, if I, if, if I'm hearing Chris correctly, he's saying that this program, all of these little things that he's mentioned, or that you've mentioned, would be, would impose no future tax burden on the residents of Rockingham, then.
Nobody said that.
Well, I thought you said, in fact, you said.
I said there would be substantial revenue.
Substantial revenue, yeah.
Excuse me. Okay. The letter is only asking to write for, for funds and asking for funds to support a variety of programs. Okay? It does say, it does include staffing for early learning students. But we have early learning students currently. We have a group in Central that is in a classroom, taking up space so that we are also having to pay for storage in other places because we don't have the storage or those kinds of things. And they're in a classroom that is not the right size for them. So if we end up doing an early learning center, it will benefit those students. If we don't, it's way down the road at this point. But we are asking to have a letter written, or I did, and there's a motion on the floor, for being able to support the other things that we are also getting, possibly getting funds for. Nature-based learning, work-based learning, professional development, and possible staffing for some early learning. That doesn't mean it has to be in a new building even, but it does provide us the opportunity to have asked for funds. Okay? So that's what we're.
No, it's not, okay.
Okay.
You can say what you want.
Thank you. You have had your turn, Jigs. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? All right, so let's vote, Chris?
Yeah.
Megan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jigs?
Nay.
Okay, now I vote yes. Okay. New business, the letter requests.
Where was that on the agenda, by the way?
I added it at the beginning, right when we added it. And it was new old business, so I added it right at the beginning. You were sitting there when I did that, thank you. And I added it as eight D.
So what was it called, the letter?
Support letter for congressional request. All right, we have a, under new business, letter requesting release from contract. That probably needs to be talked about in exec session. So I'll go on with the other things. Tuition enrollment request. There were two letters, those probably should be discussed in, in executive session.
And there's only one now. There's only one.
And you were taking the other one off?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We've already covered planting of trees. It's been almost two hours, so board retrieved ideas. If you can just send me ideas, if you have any. Basically, it would be, we're hoping to hold SU, not, not just our board. All right. Director's comments? Bill, I'll start with you.
No comment right now, thank you.
Jigs?
I feel that if, if the, if a school in our district wants to do something outside of the building that's going to impact the look of that school, then I think it should be reviewed by the board. And I think this, this business about they can plant trees, they can do anything they want there is not appropriate. And I take issue with that. So I think we, we are elected by this, by the taxpayers of the town. And we ought to be, we meet regularly and we ought to be brought up to date on these things. And by the way, I'm glad that the middle school band had a concert. We usually enjoy their music outside, but we haven't heard them. So they must be practicing inside, so anyway. Welcome back to the band.
Megan? I'm sorry, you're finished?
I'm done, yeah.
To the class of twenty twenty-two, congratulations. Welcome to adulthood. To have a member of the class of twenty twenty-two, to the class of twenty twenty-six, congratulations, welcome to high school. To the class of twenty thirty, congratulations, welcome to middle school. I have one of those too. To the class of twenty thirty-four, congratulations on completing kindergarten. And to the class of twenty thirty-five, welcome to kindergarten. Thank you to all of our teachers and our staff for all of these milestones that we know of and the ones we haven't heard. As a parent and as a board member, I'm, I'm so grateful for everything you do. Thank you.
Chris?
Well, there's a couple of things. I would like to ask once again for just a bit more information on our agendas, which I think would be nice for the public and for us. So for instance, if you're going to hire an assistant principal. So for instance, if you're going to hire an assistant principal, you know who it is, you put their name on there. It's not a secret.
I didn't know.
Yeah, well, sometimes you don't. I mean, they're still in process and you're hoping you're gonna bring somebody. But if you do, why not, you know, have their name, the FTE, if they're a teacher. Same, I would say, with the policies, just for the public. I mean, this is just numbers and letters. Nobody knows what those are. So, you know, a little more information would help the folks at home to know what we're doing. And the last thing was, I just want to say, it appears that vaccines for children under five years old are gonna be approved in the next few weeks. And I wanted to encourage parents to get their young children vaccinated and themselves if they haven't yet either. That approval is supposed to be coming by the end of this one.
Okay. Were you finished, Chris? I'm sorry.
I'm awesome.
Okay. Yes. I realize that there are some kinds, things that people feel really strongly about by one side or the other. Keeping board meetings carefully calm and collected is important and realizing that other people's comments are worthwhile and to be listened to. So just appreciate my board members, appreciate you getting through some very difficult, contentious ideas tonight, I guess, and doing it with, in a fairly good manner. So I appreciate each one of you, all four of you that are sitting here with me. I also appreciate Jim and Susan and Andy for all that they are doing. I appreciate Laura and Carrie, who have kind of had the on Zoom tonight. So just wanted that you to know that. And once again, let me ask that you remember to be considerate of everyone that goes along with your flag issues and all of those other things in your schools, being able to bring up things and learn to be able to discuss them and how to do that. Restorative Justice is one of those programs that helps with doing that. Thank you so much. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move to go into exec to discuss a personnel matter, premature knowledge of which by the public could put either the board or the person at a disadvantage.
And invite, who would you like to invite?
Susan.
And Mr.-
And Andy, I guess. Yeah, sorry. And-
Do we need?
Yeah, I mean, I think you'd want to hear from Kat.
Right, and at least for a time of-
Yeah, for the beginning.
Kat, yeah.
The down, our nurse. Okay. All right, so we'll, okay. We're back from executive session. I would entertain a motion on the request for the release of contract.
So I move to accept the request of Kat Goodrich's-
Goodell.
Goodell. Provided and not until we are able to hire a qualified replacement for her.
Any discussion? Okay, did we need to put in contract? On her contract, he said hire. Okay. So hire and the nurses under, and then nurses under contract.
I guess.
We'll put hire and the nurses under contract, okay? Friendly amendment, okay? All right.
Yep.
Thank you. Megan?
I vote, I vote yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jigs?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Secondly, I need a motion for whether we are going to approve the request for the kindergarten child to attend graft and pay the tuition.
So I'm gonna move that, trying to make it positive, but you can't. Move to deny the request of a parent for their children to receive tuition to attend another school in the district.
In another district?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another school in, yeah, in the SU.
Something, or you want?
It'll work.
Wyndham Northeast Unified School District.
And now I'm getting confused.
Well, we can put in Wyndham Northeast Unified School District because that's their requesting.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, so the motion is to deny the request of a parent for their kindergarten child to attend the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District and pay tuition for them to do that. How do you vote?
Yes.
Jigs?
It's to deny, yes. I vote to deny.
Deny. Chris?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Okay, so that passed as well. So Andy, will you notify the parent?
The next meeting is-
And then schedule the next meeting, the next regular meeting is July 18th, 2022, at 5:30. If we have appointments or that, we might end up having to have a special meeting called in between, so just to not put those off because we don't want things like that going too long.
Yes, if you get people, you're ready to hire.
Yep, yep, yep. We can do a quick 10:15, not one to approve if you need to, if something.
We've got interviews this week for Mark Teeger, so.
Okay.
I have a good, I have a lot of applicants for that position.
Oh, good. Okay, so if there's no other business?
Move to adjourn, give your motion.
It's fine. Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned.